Okay, it's nine o'clock. Meeting is called to order. We're meeting in the Central Jury Room of the Hood County Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl, Granbury, Texas. Would you please rise for the invocation and the pledges?
Let us pray. Lord, we just thank you for this glorious day. Thank you for the rain that you have bestowed upon us. Just protect our service guys that are overseas, keep them safe, get them home. Just, uh, Lord, we just ask you to give this court wisdom and knowledge to carry out our duties. And all these things, we pray in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to this great nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me to pledge to Texas.
Honor of Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Bob, we have special presentations this morning.
Judge Commissioners, we're here to celebrate anniversaries with two of our employees. Donna Churchwell, and I don't know if she'll get back or not. She's out dispensing justice right now, but we'll make sure that she gets her award. She has five years with the county. The other person is our IT guru, Jackie Solomon, who is also celebrating five years with the county. Judge?
Yep.
Yeah, do it with a coin.
There you go.
You see?
Yeah. All right, ready?
Yes, sir.
Wait a minute. I'd like to shake him. There you go. There you go.
to the court?
Judge, thank you for the opportunity to do this. A number of years ago, I was asked to represent Hood County at the North Central Texas Council of Governments on the Area Agency on Aging. That agency over there has a lot of money for people who need help. The only problem is that you have to ask for that money. You have to go see them, and they have to set someone to take care of your case if you have, you know, if you qualify. And so I've been doing that for eight and a half or so years, and I finally found someone that said that she would relieve me. And this young lady. Evelyn Karen.
It's always nice to be relieved, J.C.
It is, it is. Two or three different ways. I'm really relieved to do this because they only meet, we only meet once a quarter. But it's something that you, it's a challenge to do that, in that you know that your people in this Hood County need some help. And you have to bring that message back and get it disseminated where everyone can know that. And that's one of our biggest problems that we have now, is a lot of people don't know it. But we have what they call the ADRC locally, that you, this, or the court helped set up, along with the city and the school and the hospital. And this provides people the opportunity to go and to let them know that you need help. So that's what we're trying to get out. But Evelyn is going to assume that position, and I just wanted to introduce her to the court.
Well, I'm happy to be here. I'm not sure what I've gotten into. But I do a lot of volunteer work, and I do have the opportunity to get with people who have needs. And I'm always searching for needs for these people. And so maybe this gives me the opportunity to know more where the needs are and where I can help the people. So I graciously accept this opportunity for this position. Thank you.
Thank you for volunteering and...
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome.
And Judge, I think you asked that instead of coming once a year, Donna Green, who is the director of that program, you ask that she come twice a year.
I think we need more updates than just once a year.
You do, and we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, J.C. and Evelyn. All right. Does any citizen wish to make any comments about any agenda item? If you do, sheriff has forms. Just raise your hand, and the sheriff will be glad to give you a form. Seeing none, I'll move on. The consent agenda, does any commissioner wish to pull anything off of the consent agenda? Hearing none, I accept a motion to approve.
Go move.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Beaver, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The next item is road division, subdivision roads and plats.
Judge, I believe Don's on vacation, and it's the final plat for the Orchards 12A Pecan Plantation. Barrett Hampton and Brown, Trace Strevie's going to present this this morning, I believe.
Okay.
Sir, thank you, Judge Commissioners. 12A, I believe most of you guys have seen Orchards, the new, the next plat at the pecan plantation called Orchards 12A. In general, it's a pretty standard development, other than we're going with concrete roads with curb and gutter and underground storm drain systems. It's a little bit different approach for pecan, but we're really looking forward to the product. The plat's been reviewed and approved by the Development Commission. All of the development rules and regulations have been complete and are in place, and have been approved by the POA that's existing out at pecan. I talked with Don Lenny on Friday. He has reviewed and approved the plat. We made a couple of tweaks last week, pretty minor. Talked to A-Mud. They've approved all of the utility plans, and we have the bond in place for the utility construction. I believe it's a pretty packaged deal. I'll be happy to answer questions if you have any.
Does anyone have any questions for Trace?
It's in my precinct, Precinct 2, and I'm not aware of any issues at this point.
So then I will entertain a motion from Commissioner Precinct 2 to approve this plat?
So moved.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Taut. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Budget and finance?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. There are no budget amendments to be presented today.
That's good news, Stan.
Thank you, Stan.
The next item on the agenda is to consider the payment of the bills that have been presented to you. I gave you a list of those bills. There's one slight change that we found out about yesterday afternoon. On one employee expense reimbursement, on page three of the short abbreviated list, that amount of $243, there's a slight problem with the hotel bill. We're going to have to go back and re-figure that one item. But subtracting that out, the total of expenditures comes to $2,816,666.62. $2,515,984.52 of that is for scheduled debt service payment. Our bond debt payments come due semi-annually, and the treasurer has these checks ready to pay to Bank of Texas, Bank of America, Branch Banking Trust Company, JP Morgan Bank, the Independent Bankers Bank, and the Bank of New York Mellon. The balance of the expenditures come to $300,682.10. There is a payment to Haynes and Boone, attorneys who are representing the county and the other parties at interest in their protest of the permit that has been filed by the Brazos River Authority. That payment to Haynes and Boone is $14,050.21. And along with that, the county has also engaged Ken Ramirez for the purpose of other legal services. And those payments to the office of Ken Ramirez for the Brazos River Authority permit protest come to $10,751.97. Then to Somerville County, $23,560 for custody of out-of-county inmates. And then to W.B. Kibler Construction Company, a payment of $71,190, and that is for progress payments on the YMCA construction. I'd be happy to hear any questions you might have. We would ask your permission to pay these bills.
That was my question, Stan. When I look at the bills and you see $2 million that we normally don't have on our payments, but we're paying our February note payment, the first principal and interest note on the YMCA, and you just mentioned that, of 376, correct?
Yes, they, all of our debt service comes due semi-annually, Commissioner, on February 15th and August 15th. The reason this one is so high is typically in February is when the principal payments come due. In August, we typically pay interest only.
I noticed in the payments, we're paying the notes that we've done for 155 and so forth on the year 2008, we have two, and then 2012 note. Can we get an updated list sent to our offices on what's retiring on that? There's one of those that are retiring at this payment, I believe.
Yes, I believe you're right. I think that's the debt that relates to the act and...
Act and annex. Okay.
But I will get that to you in short order.
Make a motion. We ratify paying the bills.
Motion made by Commissioner Barrett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seceded by Mr. Barton. I don't know. I normally put initials down there, and I don't know what I'm going to do about Butch and Barry, I don't know Barton and Barry. So I got to figure out a code word on that.
Don't call him Beaver.
Yeah, don't call him Beaver. Anyway, is any further discussion on paying the bills? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Consider taking appropriate action regarding the arbitrage rebate renewal contract between Hood County and First Southwest Asset Management. Stan, I believe you have two agreements that need, two originals that need to be signed on this. You want to...
Yes, sir. I presented those to your office for inclusion on this morning's agenda. First Southwest has served as financial advisor for Hood County for many years, since long before I was here. They've done outstanding work. They help us with not only our bond issues, and they have gotten us tremendous interest rates recently, just outstanding. But they also have a couple of other engagements. One engagement is to help us comply with our obligations to the Internal Revenue Service and to calculate what we might or might not owe as an arbitrage rebate on our debt service. Typically, they expect bond proceeds to be spent rather than being invested in the bank and earning interest. This is not a problem these days with bank interest rates being as low as they are, because we typically pay much more interest on the bonds than we earn in bank earned interest. Another thing that they do is they help us file our disclosure requirements with the Securities and Exchange Commission. That's a, that's a separate agreement. But they've always been very professional, very responsive. I checked with the purchasing agent, and she recommends that the court consider awarding this, but grant purchasing an exemption from the competitive bidding process. It is allowed for the court to do so. It's not required for you to do this. There are other firms that provide these services. I should make that clear. But First Southwest has served Hood County very well. I didn't know if you wanted to hear from the purchasing agent on this as well, Judge, but this is my request, that they be awarded and that the discretionary exemption be granted in this instance.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to allow the county judge to sign the agreements between Hood County and First, First Southwest Asset Management Incorporated.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Barton, seconded by Commissioner Taut. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Considering taking appropriate action to approve the request to the auditor's office to exempt purchasing from the competitive bidding, and we just went over that, I'll entertain a motion to approve that. Pardon?
Same thing.
Same, yeah. It's part of it. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion made by Commissioner Beaver, a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Barton. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
What's the actual motion?
The motion is what Stan said, which is to exempt purchasing from competitive bidding process for financial services of the First Southwest per local government code 262-024 Sub-A Sub-4 discretionary exemptions for personal or professional services.
Thank you, sir.
Miscellaneous, discuss and take appropriate action on library financing and expansion alternatives.
Good morning, Judge Cochrane.
Morning.
Commissioners. For the record, my name is Dominique Inge. I reside in Precinct 1 at 207 South Brazos Street here in Granbury. And I'm here today before you, representing the Hood County Library Expansion Committee in my capacity as chair of that committee. And Judge, I wondered if I might ask members of our committee who are attending today to stand to be recognized?
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Hood County Library Expansion Steering Committee understands from Judge Cochrane that commissioners have decided not to pursue negotiations with Kroger for leasing a portion of the building at 1420 Highway 377 East for the purpose of rehabilitating the building for library expansion. The reasons for this are varied and complex, but are due primarily to the lack of capital funding at this time. Nevertheless, we all realize that the library faces a critical shortage of space that must be addressed in order for the library to continue operating as an accredited library with a full range of services to Hood County residents now and in the future. As you are aware, the Library Expansion Steering Committee has, for almost two years now, been assessing and analyzing libraries' needs and has made a number of recommendations to the commissioners in our committee's comprehensive reports. The Phase 1 report delivered October of 2013, and the Phase 2 report delivered this past December. As the Kroger building is not an option because of current capital funding constraints, the Library Expansion Committee requests that we be authorized to explore other options to meet the county's long-term needs in providing library services. This exploration would include analyzing requirements to build a new library at a site to be determined, evaluating funding sources, including the feasibility of creating a library district, initiating a bond issue, or conducting a countywide fundraising campaign for a new library. To determine the feasibility and priorities of the foregoing possibilities, the Library Expansion Committee requests approval to contract the services of an expert or experts, advisor or advisors in various specialties related to all of the issues we face. Some of the professional advice we require includes demographics, public funding sources, pros or cons of establishing a library district, interpreting state requirements, and private-public partnerships. This effort will require county funding. We request that commissioners plan to budget an amount not to exceed $50,000 to pay for these services upon completion. Our committee has concluded that such a feasibility study is prudent procedure and that it is necessary, next step, in fully evaluating our various options for meeting this most important challenge for Hood County. We strongly urge the court to approve this request for the future well-being of our children and the quality of life in Hood County. Thank you for your attention and for your demonstrated interest in the challenge to our community. And Judge, I have copies of this request. May I approach and...
Yes, come. Let me give you a little background while she's doing that. The Kroger building, they really wanted to lease it rather than to...
Sell it.
To sell it. So they wanted $10 a square foot, and it's 60,000 square feet, which would be about $600,000 a year. And so then it would take about $7 million to make it into a library. Stan has done a lot of research on that and said that nowhere in the local government code can we finance that money out of, we can't do bond issues or anything. We can't have, that is debt. We would have to finance all of that out of, out of M&amp;O, which is Maintenance and Operations Fund, which would be a raise of, you know, eight to 10 cents, whatever that amount would be, plus the 600,000 would just about double the library budget anyway. So that would be another two cents. And so those, the options just weren't there to do that financially for the county. And so we were going to sell, if they sold it, then it's on the books for three and a half million. It would still take seven, so that's 10 and a half million. And right now, we were like, you know, kind of, you know, you heard Steve address our debt service and how much we're paying on that, and we just didn't feel like it was, the county was capable at this time of doing that. So that's the reason that they, as a matter of fact, I was characterized during the meeting. I was very depressing all the news I was giving the Library Expansion Board. So having said all of that, one of the alternatives, they said, can we come before the commissioner's court and explore other means of expanding and financing the, a library? And like getting some expertise out of wherever, Austin or wherever, to do that? And I said, yes, you can come and present. And that's what Dominique Inge is here for today. And the Library Expansion Committee. So, does anybody have any questions?
One clarification in your letter, and it's just a technicality, but you said that Judge Cochrane and commissioners have decided not to pursue. This has not been an item we voted on. I want to make sure that's clear. We've not, we've not had, we've not had a meeting and decided this by a vote. But the judge met with the auditor, and when you look at the budget, if we did this and forwarded what's in your packet that we've looked at, that's more money than we spend on 424 miles of road a year in the county. That's more money than we spend on the jail system and the sheriff's department in a year. That's more money than we spend on Judge Messina and Judge Walton's two courtrooms in a year. So Stan did all the backdrop and homework, and I believe you met with Judge Cochrane, and he explained that feasibly financially, we could not afford this at the county's level at this time. But I mean, just to clarify that, we've not had a meeting and voted this down. It's just that, as the chief financial officer of the county, he's explained that we don't have the funds to go forward. Is that a correct statement?
Thank you for the clarification. Yes, thank you.
Okay, they, but Ms. Inge has brought before us an item to be discussed, to hire this consultant outside, not to exceed $50,000. Does anybody have any comments about that or accept a motion to do it?
Well, we've got to go through purchasing, and I mean, and is it in the budget and where we getting the money? Purchasing's got to be involved in that.
Okay.
Do we need to put this on the next agenda?
Yeah, we can do that. Who can, who is your expert on the committee? Is that you, Dominique?
Now, if you have questions with regard to the feasibility study, Vice Chair Kevin Downing is here who might be able to address some of your questions.
Yeah. Kevin, I think somebody needs to get with purchasing to be...
Sure. We're just trying to start this... So we can apply the law. You're right. I'm sorry, Judge. Yes, you're exactly right. So we're just trying to get this process started, and whatever, whatever the procedures are that we need to, we're ready to do it. But the first step was trying to get the money budgeted so we can, we're in the process of identifying various consultants and advisors who the feasible, who can provide the expertise to do the feasibility study and some of the other things. So whatever the procedures are internally that we need to follow, obviously, we're going to follow.
How much money does the library fund have in it?
Ask the court. She's here.
Stan?
Dan might know.
Here, Barry.
Judge and Commissioners, the fund balance in the library fluctuates somewhere between $350,000 to $510,000, year in and year out, depending on their operating results. But it's close to half a million dollars.
So is that where the money would come from for this? Is that what you're saying?
Judge and Commissioners, it's, the county's finances are unique. Our struggle, our challenge is to comply with the state laws as they regard to the tax caps. The county is in relatively good position as far as indebtedness is concerned. If you look at the tax rate structure, there is a very restrictive cap when it comes to setting a tax rate to raise maintenance and operations taxes. That's where the rub typically comes in. There is no similar cap when it comes to setting a debt service tax rate if the attorney general approves debt for the county.
Except if, there's no limit legally, but it affects our tax rate when we borrow money?
It does affect the tax rate.
And our bond rating.
But it's within our power to set a debt service tax rate where it is taken away from us to make that same determination when it comes to maintenance and operations taxes. There's a very restrictive cap, and that is part of the problem of leasing property because a period lease that does not result in the transfer of title to property, those lease payments must come from maintenance and operations taxes. Now, if the property were to be purchased, I think debt could be issued. Still, the tax rate does go up, and the taxpayers have to, have to pay that. But it does reclassify, re-characterize the revenues and the payments as being debt service payments. I believe there's an 80-cent tax rate in total for the county. The county is approximately very close to 40 cents on the tax rate. So whatever we do, and this was an issue that came up when we recently talked about leasing vehicles. In order to make those vehicle lease payments come from the debt service, we had to change the leasing agreement so that the county would actually end up with title to the vehicles at the end of the lease term. Or at least have an option to buy the vehicle at a bargain purchase clause. But once you do that, if you have the attorney general's approval that that is acceptable debt for the county, then those taxes can come from debt service taxes. Until then, they have to come out of maintenance and operations. And as you well know, during our budget deliberations each year, maintenance and operations tax revenues are very limited, and we have a lot of other needs... And we have a lot of other needs in the Sheriff's Department, in the jail, in the courtrooms, paying attorneys to represent indigent defendants and the like. It's always a challenge. But I think that's one important distinction to make, that if the court wanted to devote these kind of resources to the library, I strongly urge you to go down the path of debt financing rather than maintenance and operations financing. I think that would present a very difficult challenge for the county.
Let me... There is a bill proposed right now to lower the rollback rate from 8% down to 4%. 4% would be right now... If you went over one cent, if you raised it over one cent, you'd be in a rollback situation.
1.6. 1.6.
Yeah.
It's very restrictive.
Yeah. And if you... Eight, right now, we're about at three. So, I mean, it's just a real bad situation. But anyway, so... But that doesn't address what they're here for right now.
I think that summed up the larger problems that we have. I guess the question was, where's the 50 coming from?
Right.
Now, I don't know if we had it in the budget, our operating budget from the library, to pull 50 out of it or where.
I would suggest that we allow Dominic and Kevin to work with Courtney and the purchasing agent to identify some sources. And then, as Nelda has time, it may not be the next court, but if she has time to figure out the parameters of an RFP or an RFQ, then to come back to the court with a recommendation with Courtney's involvement, since she's the director of the library. And then Stan can find those funds or look into those funds if we identify a funding source.
So, is that... You're going to put that in the form of a motion, Commissioner?
Dean, the motion would be that we allow the committee, the steering committee, along with Dominic and Kevin Downing, along with the librarian Courtney Kincaid, to work with our purchasing agent and our auditor to identify funds in-house with the library's current budget and come back with a proposal through purchasing that we can discuss.
Okay. I have a second. Second. Second by Commissioner Barton. Any further discussion? And all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all very much. Discuss and take appropriate action to authorize County Judge to sign a letter in support of Palopinto County Emergency Services District Number One, Ray Wilson.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. This is a request for signing a support letter to the FCC on behalf of Palopinto County. They're working on their radio system for their Fire and Emergency Services District and Emergency Management. There would be no effect on Hood County. They're asking for support for all adjoining counties. And also, in exchange, they would be allowed to access that radio system in the event of an emergency in Palopinto. So, there would be interoperability with them.
So, they're asking us to do this?
They're asking all surrounding counties because it'd be a higher output transmitter, but it would not affect our county and our radio operations.
They're putting one at each corner of their county, right?
Yes, sir.
No cost to Hood County?
There's no cost to Hood County. We're just supporting them in their endeavor.
Their letter, yeah.
It'll help if we own an interlocal with firefighting and things like that?
We would be allowed to access that radio system for interoperability in Palopinto County in the event of any fire or emergency.
I'll entertain a motion to allow the County Judge to sign this agreement in support of Palopinto County Emergency Services District.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Taut. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Fire Marshal, once again, discuss, take appropriate action to clarify the term bunker gear so far as it's defined as personal protective equipment to be purchased.
At the October 14th, 2014 Commissioners' Court, bunker gear was approved for purchase up to $30,000 for firefighter protection. Just to use the general term bunker gear, what I'd like to do is just clarify that, that it's not just a coat and pant ensemble. It would also include items such as helmets, boots, gloves, protective hoods, eye protection, suspenders for the pants, that type of stuff. But it's all part of the firefighter protective ensemble.
Ray came to the offices a couple of weeks ago and said that some departments have fish fries and have fundraisers. So, when they buy bunker gear, and we turn around and buy bunker gear, it's kind of repetitive. So, that's what he's asking for because Fund 55, I believe, during the budget cycle, when we ask... He asked us to spend 18,000 on air bottles. That's a set number for air bottles. But when he wanted to spend the money for the bunker gear, it makes no sense to go out and make one of the nine departments buy coats if they just bought them themselves. But they would like the leeway, and he would like the leeway to work with purchasing to buy helmets, boots, goggles, gloves, and whatever. But the purchasing agent was directed by the court to buy bunker gear being the clothing. So, that's what this agenda item's about. Is that not correct?
Yes, sir.
It says take appropriate action, but is there any action it needs on this other than to accept that definition?
That would be the only action I know of.
Are you good with that, or do you want us to make a motion, Nelda? Do you need it? I'll make a motion that we allow the purchasing agent and the fire marshal to have the leeway to work with the word bunker gear to be any of the personal protection equipment that's needed for the voluntary fire departments.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Barry. Second by Commissioner Dever to clarify the term bunker gear between the Emergency Management Coordinator and the purchasing department. Any further discussion? And all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Discuss, take appropriate action for the purchase of a Firehouse Software computer program, the amount of $610 from Fund 55.
Yes, sir. Currently, all nine fire departments use a program called Firehouse Software. This is used to do their run reporting and statistics for each individual fire department. It's also utilized for their Texas Fire Incident Reporting System. That's something that each of the fire departments has to use to report their operations to the state and federal, especially to be compliant for any grant programs. Currently, the Fire Marshal's Office does not have this program. We have had it in the past. I would like to obtain a license to copy for operation in my office, so that way I can also help track what's going on with the fire departments a little easier, as well as it'll also allow me to keep up with their personnel, their fleet, and maintenance issues with the fleet that we help support. The cost of this is $610. I'd like to request consideration for that.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Ray on this? I'll entertain a motion to allow him to purchase Firehouse Software computer program in the amount of $610 from Fund 55.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Taut. I have a second. Second. Second by Commissioner Barton. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you all.
Discuss, take appropriate action regarding the administration of a watershed implementation grant, subaward agreements, 06-150610, for the environmental health. James?
Judge, Commissioners, appreciate you putting this on the agenda today. After speaking with the judge, I wanted to come before you and update you on the grant. Basically, it's the non-point source implementation grant, Phase One. The grant began September 9th of 2014, and it finalizes April 30th of 2015. We're now in the second quarter, which calls for the contracting of a vendor or securing that contract with a vendor to digitize the records in the Health Department. There has been some concern after speaking with Stan McBroom, the auditor, about some of the reporting requirements and making sure that we adhere to, I believe it's OMB-133. It's a financial document that I have not read and am not familiar with. However, I know in summary, it requires some tracking of weekly wages, as well as even daily wages, and making sure that those are available at the end of the grant during the county's big audit, as well as making sure that we adhere to the minority and women-owned businesses, making sure they have a fair chance during the contracting phases. After speaking with you, Judge, and some of the commissioners, I looked at coming up with some solutions to maybe fixing the issue. As in-house, I've learned that attempting to track some of these requirements that are required by the feds are extremely encumbrousome. So, that being said, I did make contact with a grant writing company that specializes in going out and applying for grants and administering those grants. And I did obtain some costs for potentially hiring them if the court decides to do so. And I also have some other ideas or some other options for you if necessary. But after contacting GrantWorks, a very preliminary quote was $75 an hour, not to exceed $15,000. We would only be billed for the services that were necessary, and anything in-house that we could handle, we would. That's for the first phase. Assuming that the court decides to move forward with Phase One, if we complete that, then the application for Phase Two, which is to replace septic systems in the county in the Water Quality District, that grant is for $300,000. That could be rephrased, if you will, or the language changed to include the cost of the administrator, which could, again, potentially be GrantWorks, so that there would be no out-of-pocket expense. For Phase One, those costs, since we're already into that sub-agreement, would be on the county's dollar. So, I bring that to you for your consideration, and I'll be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have.
This is the Davis-Bacon Act is what he's talking about, which is the making sure that we do award all of our contracts and everything appropriately under that act. The problem is, is that we did that on one project. We had everything reported correctly. And just because the records were in another office rather than the auditor's office, we got dinged on their findings, right, Stanley? So, you know, they're really strict. And as a matter of fact, you could spend all of the money and everything, and if every i is not dotted and every t crossed exactly what they say, then they could make you pay the grant back.
Trouble is, we've done that every time. How many times we had to do a redo, Stan? Three times? We dotted the i's, crossed the t's, and then they say, all right, you're good. And then they'd come back and say, nope, another rule comes up.
Good at your file.
Yes, sir. I believe what you're referring to is the experience we had on the Texas Department of Agriculture grant.
Yes.
That was for the recovery from the tornado damage. And...
It was a nightmare for you and Don.
Well, it was. I mean, clearly, a devastating tornado, terrible loss, loss of life, no question about the circumstances. But the awarding and the collecting of federal grants is not based on the merits of the circumstances. It's based on toeing the mark when it comes to documenting the evidence in the correct manner at the correct time. We could attempt to do this. We had a bad experience on this building. There was an energy conservation grant that was awarded for 115,000 to replace one HVAC unit in this building to implement a computer program and to have one person come out for about a week or two to set that up. It was all done through train, and we were denied on that grant reimbursement several times, thanks only to the persistence of Rhonda Ship and the Sheriff's Department. After several years of haggling with them, we finally got the money back. But through our efforts, had it not been for Rhonda, we were denied the money several times.
And that was 110,000 or something like that. It was a significant amount of money.
Yes, sir. That's correct. We've had other bad experiences, but the good experiences that we have had have been when we have engaged GrantWorks to administer and manage the documentation and the filing and the reporting. They do a tremendous amount of work when they do that. And as irritating as it might be to have to go through, like Donald and I did, on the compensation sheets, it's required in order to pass muster with the grantors. Because if, as the judge said, if they can find any deficiencies in the papers, they will refuse to pay the money.
Well, let me ask you a question. What do we gain out of this grant, anyway? I mean, it's digitizing records, but that's 105,000, and then that they're going to pay, and then $15,000 out of our pocket to pay to comply with Davis-Bacon. I mean, what... How does this benefit the county?
Currently, all of the records in my department relative to the septic systems are in hard files. We currently, when we get a request from the real estate agents or homeowners, we go to those files, find that, pull it out, we scan it, and then in turn, email it or fax those in cases. What this does is it, of course, digitizes all of those records, links those into a software program that we currently have so that it is easily accessible and then capable of reaching into and quickly emailing or printing that off and getting it to the persons that need it.
Well, in the second phase of this, though, well, we've done these before, but usually the problem I have with the whole issue is we're having to pay for this. I mean, usually a grant works where you can recoup your money for the paperwork and the backup. That's where I have heartburn with this grant here. But in the second phase, are we going to... Will we miss anybody, or have you identified other sources that we can still do low-income septic tanks? Do we have another source besides this that we've used in the past?
There is the... Currently, there's the USDA office in Hillsborough that assists low-income folks. They provide either grants or no-interest loans. So, that's an ongoing situation or opportunity that's been there over the years. Another entity is the RCND, the Resource Conservation and Development Corporation. It's really nonprofit, but they replaced seven septic systems this last fall. And I currently have an email that I responded to this morning. They have another 8,000 available to replace another septic system for a low-income person. And those funds come from, it's called the Supplemental Environmental Program. That's where government entities or even private industry get fined by TCQ or EPA, and those funds get pushed back down, and in turn, they can be used locally for...
What's the Commissioner's desire on spending that extra 15,000, not to exceed 15,000, on the administration of the watershed implementation grant?
Plus a $75 an hour bill, too.
Pardon?
And there's $75 an hour.
Well, that's included.
Seventy-five dollars an hour, not to exceed 15,000 total. And that does not include incidentals such as travel and such.
I did tell you, we did look into this at Parker County and Johnson County and surrounding counties. I asked you to call, and when you found out that the... I mean, you can tell them what you told me, but when the grants were not refundable or paid back through the grant, most of the larger counties are just not even accepting them.
Right. I contacted three counties, Parker County, Johnson County, and Somerville. And I spoke to the county judges' offices with the request as to what they were doing with respect to federal grants. And I was told in both cases with Johnson and Parker Counties that they had attempted those in the past, and they finally just stopped applying for those because of the large amount of paperwork involved, and they could not afford to have a grant writer on staff. So, my next question was, were they... Did they have someone on retainer such as a grant writing company? And they said, no, they did not. They simply don't apply for those. So, Somerville County, of course, being a smaller county, only applies for grants through their emergency operations folks.
If we did have decided to do this, where's that 15,000 coming from?
Do you have it in your budget?
I don't.
Well, what's the Commissioner's pleasure? I'll entertain a motion either way. I'll entertain a motion either way. I'm going to make a motion that we don't do it. So, my motion is, is that we, for the watershed implementation sub-grant, Award Agreement 0615, 0610, that we do not participate in this grant.
Motion to deny the grant.
Yes.
I'll second that.
All right, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding a request to purchase bookshelves to match the existing furniture in the Office of Commissioner of Precinct 2, and he's going to recuse himself, abstain from this. What happened is, several years ago, we, in order to balance the budget, we took the supplies, miscellaneous small equipment, out of the individual budgets so that we could better control them. Now, all of this is coming back on the Commissioner's Court to do. So, I'll entertain a motion from anybody except Commissioner Barton to approve this expense of $314 from Fund 55. This motion made by Commissioner Berry. Do I have a second, Dever? Any further discussion? And all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Consider for approval a payroll deduction for the benevolent fund in accordance with Local Government Code 155.001 and 155.002, and Treasurer and Sheriff.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Under the Local Government Code, any payroll deduction that is requested must be authorized by the Commissioner's Court. Sheriff Deeds will be happy to explain what this deduction is, and then we ask your permission to proceed with it.
The Law Enforcement Association of Hood County, members of that or my staff, not just the law enforcement people, but people that work for me, Fire Marshal's Office is part of it, a couple of them. But what this is for in regards to some of the incidents we've had in the last few years of loss of life, this was a fund that we wanted to set up, get going, get funded by the members to put input in, it'd be $13 a year input from salary deduction, and then it would build up a fund that the people that are members of that and have a loss of life would be eligible up to $1,000 to get that back. So, hopefully, we don't have any loss of life again, but this will be something that could help in the future.
But is this for all departments, not just for the sheriffs?
Yes, anybody could be a part of this, yes.
So, somebody from Road Ops, some accident, anybody?
Anybody could be a part of it, yes.
And just as a side note, there is no administrative cost. The Government Code allows for one, but once it's set up, there is not really anything to adding someone to it periodically.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve a payroll deduction for the benevolent...
Easy for you to say.
I said it right the first time. Benevolent fund in accordance with Local Government Code 155.001 and 155.002.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Barton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Taut. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding a request to use a courthouse area for the Texas Independent Day Celebration, February 28th to March 1st. Teresa?
Good morning, Court.
Morning.
Judge, thank you, Commissioners. I'm Teresa Sims with the Texas Independence Day Celebration, and I'm not here to ask for any money.
That's great.
But our event will bring money to Hood County and Granbury. We do ask that we have the use of the courthouse, which would include closing the interior parking area around the square, starting at 5:00 PM on Friday, February 27th, for setup of the event, continuing through Sunday evening. We ask for that. And then we, again, would like to put Texas flags around the courthouse square. In the past, we've had this done. The last two years, the county maintenance department has graciously installed the rebar, so it's safely not damaging any electrical or water. And then we come back and put all of our flags around just PVC pipe that just slips right over the rebar. So, we would like to start that 10 days before the event, and we thank you very much for your consideration.
So, February 17th is when you're asking the maintenance to help you with that? Is that the date?
And really, I think, do you want to do anything on the 27th? Because 28th is a Saturday, right? And I know you have it on there, but do you want to do, like, close the square on the 27th, say after 5:00 or something?
Yes, Judge, thank you. About 5:00. We would like to put out some signs on Thursday, the 26th, that says, "No parking after 5:00 PM on Friday," so that we can have our vendors set up.
And I'll entertain a motion to allow the Texas Independence Day Celebration to close the courthouse square from February 27th at 5:00 until March 1st, 2015.
Allow the flags to be put up on the 17th.
Allow the flags to be put up on the 17th. Are you making that?
I'll make that motion. I'll second, Judge.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much, Teresa.
Thank you, Judge.
Consider and take appropriate action regarding a resolution for the online voter registration. The election administrator and Commissioner Precinct 4, Janice, better known as Cricket.
Yes. Morning, everyone. TAEA is the Texas Association of Election Administrators, is trying to get all the counties in the state of Texas to pass this with your board, with our Commissioner's Court. There's like four or five at least bills that are going to be going through legislation this time to try to get the online voter registration, and that is what this is about. It's mainly, it's another option for everybody to get registered to vote. You have to have a Texas driver's license, though, in order to do this, and you have an audit data thing on there on your driver's license, and everybody has to match that up with your driver's license. If at one point in time you are registering and something is wrong, it flags you and you can't proceed. So, it is just an extra online way to do, everybody's online, it's just an extra step. It also helps in our office, when everybody handwrites. I've had to help with some of this. I can't read your writing, so we get addresses wrong or your name wrong, and this will stop all that.
Okay. What I'm going to do is, if it's okay with everybody, is to let Commissioner Barton read this resolution that you would like signed.
Resolution for online voter registration. Whereas, Texas voter registration laws require voter registrars to distribute, receive, decipher, process, and archive millions of voter registration cards each year, and whereas the current process for registering to vote on paper applications in Texas is inefficient, expensive, and error-ridden, and whereas 24 states have already authorized their citizens to register to vote through online systems that have proven to be more secure, dramatically lower costs, more accurate, and for many voters, easier to access. And whereas Texas already authorized voters to electronically register to vote when obtaining and renewing driver's licenses and updating voter information online at sos.gov, and whereas a Texas online voter registration system would be more secure because Texas driver's license numbers, as well as audit numbers that are unique to each TDL, would be required in order to be able to register online, and whereas online voter registration would enable state and local registrars to dramatically reduce mailing and data entry, as demonstrated by a study of the Arizona Online Voter Registration System, which determined that their costs were lowered from .83 cents per card to .03 cents. And whereas online voter registration would enable, in this state, which has one of the lowest voter registration rates in the nation, an easy online alternative to register to vote. And whereas the Secretary of State would continue to reimburse counties the same amount for voter registration cards processed electronically or by paper, and whereas online registration would in no way constitute a mandate on local voter registrars. Voters could continue to choose to complete paper voter registration applications, and voter registrars are required to receive electronic voter registration applications from DPS. Therefore, be it resolved that on January 27th, 2015, the Hood County Commissioner's Court meeting as a body in Granbury, Texas adopts this resolution and urges the Texas Legislature to authorize Texans to have the option to register to vote by electronic means that conforms to the security requirements of the Texas Secretary of State and the Department of Public Safety. Sign this 27th day of January, 2015.
Okay. Thank you very much, Commissioner. See, it'll teach them to miss that meeting. Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Barton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Taut. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much, Cricket. Acton Municipal District, AMUD, Port Ridgely Sewer Project, Texas Community Block, Tina Lewis. Morning.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. I'll go ahead and kick it off first. Of course, I'm Richard English, General Manager with Acton Municipal Utility District. As y'all are aware, this has been a cooperative effort between the county and AMUD for a number of years now to bring first-time sewer service to Port Ridgely East. It's a subdivision that has a lot of small postage stamp lots, it's located on canals, it's been identified by the Watershed Protection Plan as a hotspot-free coli contamination, and we certainly feel that onsite septics are contributory to that. As you're aware, we have been successful in two phases of funding. Unfortunately, a couple of years ago, we were not successful on the third phase at that time. Now, in the meantime, the AMUD Board did opt to go ahead and provide infrastructure collection facilities throughout the remainder of Port Ridgely East. The hope here is that these future grants, as we go after them, 100% of which will go to benefit the qualifying households, as opposed to also investing in the infrastructure and the street. So, we've got that in the ground. We feel like this is going to allow us to benefit more people for the dollar, and so we're optimistic that this round of funding that will be successful in our application. So, again, always appreciate the effort that we put together as a team to try to get this funding to move forward, and certainly would look forward to that continuing relationship. With that, I'll hand it over to Tina.
Judge, Commissioners, what we brought today to court is two items that are needed for the application process. The resolution, which gives the court the ability to apply for the grant, and then it also recognizes that it's a competition. The amount of the grant is $275,000. The resolution authorizes the judge to authorize signatory for all paperwork pertaining to the grant. It also acknowledges that the grant will follow, the county will follow all local, state, and federal guidelines and programmatic requirements of the grant. And then, Section 6 of the resolution discusses the match that's required. It's $13,750, and it's actually from the utility fund of the utility district.
I believe that A and B are together on this, right?
Yes, sir.
On this agenda item?
Yeah. The next section is the inter-local agreement.
Right. Have all the Commissioners read this resolution and inter-local agreement?
Just, sir, for clarification, since it was such a hot topic on the grant earlier, AMUD has always partnered with the county. Grant Works does all the paperwork, the backup, and submits it. And then AMUD, you know, our auditor has to oversee it, and you have to sign it, but this is, there's not money coming out of our coffre. They're paying for it through their, she said, utility fund. So, the money that's spent for Grant Works, which the lady works for us at the podium, is paid for by AMUD as well, so that's just a clarification.
This is a grant, as you've already heard, about sewers for Port Ridgely, and it's up to $275,000. So, I won't go through the whole reading of it like we did on the voter registration, but I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution that is in your packet, and also allow the county judge to sign that resolution and to sign the inter-local agreement with AMUD and Hood County.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Taut.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Berry. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Discuss and take... Thank you, Tina. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding a request by the Children's Advocacy Center to put ribbons on the square again this year. Sheriff?
Judge, Commissioners, they asked me to come before you. I'm on the board for the Children's Advocacy Center, and the last few years, they put these ribbons out on the square, and so they request to be able to do that for the month, the whole month of April, so that it'd be just like it was last year, in a six-foot by four-foot area on all four corners of the property down there on the square, so it'll go on for the whole month. So, they just asked that you approve letting them do this again.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to allow the Children's Advocacy Center to put out those blue ribbons at the corner over the square in April. Who made the motion? Commissioner Dever? Second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Barton. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Discuss and take appropriate action necessary for Hood County regarding the options for meeting performance bond requirements for Hood County Recreation Center and issues related to the PIA. Commissioner Precinct 3?
Yeah, we got approval from the city to begin construction. We just need to post bond... Come on up, Curran. We need to post bond to be able to initiate that service.
So, is this, your motion would be to allow, or to...
I don't know how much the bond should be.
To meet, to post the bond to meet the requirements of the PIA?
Yes.
Based on the current, the current number that we're working with, and bids are still out, we'll have a final number for you guys at the meeting on Friday, but based on the number today, the bond would cost $8364. But that leaves all of the $400,000 at your disposal, rather than tying that up for the year. I expect that number to drop, because we have the next two days scheduled with the contractor to begin the VE process and whittle down that number.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to purchase this bond for, as required by the PIA, with the city of Granbury, in the amount of $8,360.
Or less.
Or less. Is that, you making that motion, Commissioner? Commissioner Taut, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Berry. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Consider and take appropriate action to authorize county judge to sign the owner-agent designation form for the Texas Department of License and Regulations Compliance Division, Architectural Barriers, TLDR Form for the county, and the YMCA. This is requested by Todd Baker of YMCA, who needs this form signed before they can proceed on...
This is for the...
Architect.
The architects, but it also has to do, like we did at the ELC and Animal Control, with handicap variances in parking and so forth, so I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Taut. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Consider and take appropriate action to authorize county judge to sign the inter-local corporation contract between Hood County and DPS. The epigraphics, is that what that says, Sheriff? And distribution center?
Yeah.
What I said.
Hood County does a lot of business with a lot of different agencies around the country, around the state of Texas, in regards to investigation of different things, gunshots, DWIs, a lot of things like that. The cheapest way we can go is DPS buys it in bulk for the state of Texas, so there's a number of different companies, or Surchie is one of the companies, but we can still buy it cheaper going through DPS, through this store that they have set up. So, this agreement, inter-local agreement, goes from September through... So this agreement, inter-local agreement, goes from September through end of August and so it asks that you sign this so we can continue doing business at the best price in the state of Texas for the supplies that we need in regards to gathering evidence for these crimes.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to allow the county judge to sign the inter-local agreement contract between Hood County and DPS, Reprographics and Distribution Center.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Barton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. And we are now going to convene into executive session to consider two agenda items. One is under Texas Local Government Code 551-076, Deliberations About Security Devices. And the second is in, under Local Government Code 551.087, Economic Development, and discuss the 312 tax abatement for Exelon Wolfhalla Generation Plant. And then we'll reconvene into open session and take appropriate action on Items 14A and B.